All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2023 Sammamish City Council Forum hosted by the East King County Asian and Pacific Islander Coalition. My name is Ashwin Rao and I will be your moderator this evening. Thank you very much to the candidates for making the time to speak with us tonight and answer some of our questions. I wanted to start it out by thanking our sponsoring organizations tonight to our Indian American Community Services, the Chinese Information and Service Center, the Muslim Community Network Association, the Japanese American Citizens League, and Eastside For All. These organizations are all members of APEC, which is a coalition of community-based organizations dedicated to providing a collective civic voice for minority groups on the east side. We are a nonprofit organization that does not fund nor endorse any candidates. So to start, I'll briefly explain the guidelines for tonight. For the first hour, I will ask questions that were submitted beforehand by community members that summarize our most pressing topics. After I ask the question, I will post it in the chat so everyone can read it. Each candidate will then get up to two minutes to answer. Priya will be our timekeeper this evening, right there. When you begin to speak, a countdown clock will appear in her box with your remaining time. She will raise her hand when you have 10 seconds remaining, and we will verbally call time when you reach your limit. As moderator, I will only step in if the discourse becomes uncivil. Please remember, this is a forum, not a debate, so please refrain from personal attacks on your opponents and focus instead on discussing your positions on the presented topics. So at seven o'clock, we will ask questions that have been submitted by attendees this evening. And if you have a question, please send it to me via direct chat so we don't flood the main chat with comments. We will ask each candidate for one-minute responses so that we can get through as many questions as possible. And with about 10 minutes left, we will wrap up with one-minute closing statements. And this forum will be posted on YouTube if you want to revisit it or share it later. So without further ado, let's begin with opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and explain why they're running. The speaking order has been randomized in the interest of fairness. So, Councilmember O'Farrell, you are first up. Please proceed when you are ready. The clock will begin when you start speaking.
Good evening, everyone. I had a feeling I was going to be first. I'm not sure why. I always start by explaining my first name. My name is Roisin O'Farrell. I break it into two syllables, Ro and Sheen, so it's Ro, your boat, Martin Sheen, the actor. So if you put those two together, but Martin Sheen in a boat, that's me. So my name is Roisin O'Farrell. I've lived here for 25 years. I came originally from Ireland. I have bachelor's degree in business from Trinity College Dublin. My professional career was spent in retail management. I live here with my husband and two children, and it was really as a result of my son Kian that I got involved in community engagement. My son has autism and was diagnosed with autism when he was eight. I approached the city to declare Autism Awareness Day back in 2016. And that was my first introduction into civic engagement in Sammamish. And I realized that it was something that I really enjoyed, and it was kind of life-enhancing for me. It was a way to become more connected to the city that I had grown to love and call home. And when I discovered that this was somewhere where I was going to live, that I was in a hurry to kind of make more connections with people who live here. You can't live in a place for 25 years and know no one. You have to push yourself out the front door and you have to get to know your neighbors, get to know the people around you. If you're going to live in a city for any longer than a few years, I think in order to be happy, you have to make those personal connections. And that has really been the impetus for why I am in front of you right now. And from there, I was appointed to Planning Commission, and I serve on the Board of the Sammamish YMCA. I am on two, count them, two HOA boards. That takes up a lot of time too. So I'm very connected with what's happening with my neighbors and kind of local issues and the kinds of things that are important to people in Sammamish. And so thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Councilmember Stewart. Two minutes.
Great. Thank you so much for hosting this and thank you, everyone, for being here. Sammamish is and always will be for my children. For my children and many of yours call home. Ensuring that Sammamish can be a place that we can all be proud of is why I serve and why I'm running for reelection. It really is quite an amazing place. As a 20-year resident, I've raised my two kids here, well, am raising my two kids here. And I want to make sure that it is a safe and welcoming place for all. I also want to make sure that we can meet the needs of today without compromising the ability for future generations to meet their needs. We have a lot of work to do to be able to do that. Over the 20 years that I've lived here and raised my family here, I've been very involved. Started out when my oldest, who's now 23, was in preschool and I was the PTA president at his preschool. I've been a coach. I've been involved as a Cub Scout den leader, Eastlake Little League Board. I served as a chief umpire for a year. That was very exciting. Taekwondo instructor, drama booster, and now councilwoman. I currently serve on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors, and I'm also the Chair of the Finance Administration Committee for the Eastside Fire and Rescue. I came here with a, you know, came to the council with a few decades of professional experience, a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering, and a concentration in economics. And I feel like all of that really helped me to be able to understand the complexities of the challenges that we face and the systems that we have to develop in order to meet the needs of our very diverse community. I'm proud of the work that I've been able to do on the council. And I'll hopefully will get to talk a little bit more about that during this. And I'm excited to really talk more and to share with you more of my passions and more of my priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Amato.
Hi. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Josh Amato, and I'm running for city council to ensure Sammamish remains a great place for us all to live. As a young teen, I never imagined that I'd be fortunate enough to live in a city like this or be running to be a representative on the council. When I was five, my mom was murdered, and it remains a cold case to this day. After that, my dad remarried and his new wife adopted me and my brother. But when I was 12, they divorced. And then shortly after that, my adopted mom shipped me off to a Boys Reform School in Tennessee. When I returned, she dropped me and my brother off at my grandma's house and then was gone and out of my life. From that point on, I was raised by my grandma, and I credit my grandma's support and influence for the things I'm proud to have accomplished today. I've been a small business owner for 10 years. I served four years on the Sammamish Planning Commission, and I currently serve on the Oz Board of Directors, which is the Progressive Animal Welfare Society. I've been a member of Rotary for several years and currently serve as the Sammamish Rotary President. I'm running because our city is at a crossroads. The council raised property taxes by 12% over the last couple of years. And in this budget, the council overspent revenues by $5 million, which was projected to lead to insolvency in four to five years. Now they're considering a utility tax increase, card tab fee, higher property taxes, and more to pay for over the financial mismanagement. I believe this approach is backwards. Asking residents to pay higher taxes should be the last resort. And if elected, I will go line by line through the budget, scrutinize every expense to ensure it is truly needed. These small savings matter, especially to our neighbors living on constrained incomes. I'm running to make the difficult choices that must be made to have an effective and efficient government that truly serves our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mrs. Bosworth.
Hi. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Bosworth, and I'm running for Sammamish City Council, position number four. I moved to Sammamish in 2018 and voted for the first time for city council in 2019. I talked to my neighbors. I went to candidate forums. I've read documents on the city's website. I thought I'd done enough research, but I quickly realized just how critical voting for this council is. I saw this new city that I loved come to a standstill with serial moratoriums and endless lawsuits. In 2020, I began watching our meetings and sought out informed residents who helped teach me about the city and its history. I devote many hours a week to watching our meetings, talking to people in the community, and building roots here, just like all of you. I now serve on the Planning Commission, which gives me a front row seat to how we can tackle our affordable housing challenges. I hear time and again from people who feel disconnected and not as informed as they'd like to be. But at the same time, through the stories you've told me, you've demonstrated a deep engagement and commitment to this city. I want to find a way to make you feel connected because what we do directly affects you. The best way to start is for you to see meaningful progress towards enhancing the livability in Sammamish. Therefore, thank you for being here tonight and/or watching this later. In the coming weeks, take time to read what we may send you or go to our website. And if you see us on the other side of the door, let's engage on the future of Sammamish. Looks like I have a few more seconds, so let me just take a moment to explain my history. I have, I work in technology, and one of the reasons that I'm doing this is because learning about Sammamish has activated another part of my brain, and it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Randolph.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the East King County Asian and Pacific Island Coalition for inviting me to this forum. I am Pamela Randolph, and I'm accredited for Sammamish City Council, position three. As a single mother, I raised two boys who grew up enjoying everything that the Northwest has to offer. However, in 1991, I became a single parent, and I was assigned to the night shift at King County. As a creative solution, I invited my sister, who was also a single parent, and her three children to live with us in Washington. Together, we raised five independent and successful children who thrive in our state. Being that my boys are Native American, being quarter Kickapoo, and my sister's children are of Hispanic descent, we wanted to make sure that they understood their proud heritage. I realized the importance of heritage when I was a foster parent and had to meet the needs of our culturally diverse family. Learning to love, accept, and support children where they are is a passion of mine. My career highlights are protecting the waters of the Puget Sound, creating and managing operations and maintenance budgets, and capital improvement projects. I have created sustainability plans to save energy, and I have built diverse teams and supported and mentored many people along the way because it was the right thing to do. I strongly believe in meeting people where they are. I am not a politician or a polished public speaker, but I am passionate about helping people to achieve their goals and dreams as demonstrated by my work. I've jumped into this race because I felt I had the skills, abilities, and knowledge that could help the city of Sammamish at this time. I have a bachelor's degree in business with human resource background, certificates in project management, business management, and wastewater treatment as well. I certainly have demonstrated my dedication to a job well done. This is one thing that you can be certain of. I walk my talk. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have Mr. Sid Gupta.
Hi, I'm Sid Gupta. I'm running for Sammamish City Council, position number three. Thank you to APEC for hosting this discussion. Thank you to our community members for being here and listening either tonight or virtually later on. I've been on the Parks Commission for the city of Sammamish for the past eight years, including two years each as Chair and Vice Chair. I've been a native plant steward, doing restoration work in our props and open spaces for the past nine years, and was recognized as Volunteer of the Year for the city of Sammamish in 2018 for that work. I've been volunteering in our community, building positive connections for nearly a decade. But this is my first time running for public office, and it's been a big learning experience. Three, two or three weeks from the election, it's still pretty daunting, but I've been genuinely humbled by the kindness and enthusiasm and the support that the community has offered me. I've been endorsed by several local and state-elected officials, community members, volunteers, as well as the Sierra Club, Washington Conservation Action, and Washington Bikes. Very quickly, I'll list my priorities. Improving the safety, efficiency, and connectivity of our transportation, especially non-motorized transportation.
You want to start the...
Ensuring the values of sustainability held by our community are meaningfully reflected in our planning documents. Ensuring that Sammamish maintains a vibrant financial future by diversifying our revenue sources, mitigating our reliance on property tax, and aggressively pursuing grants potentially by hiring a grant writer on city staff. And helping Sammamish become a proactive voice in our regional community as we work to solve challenges like housing diversification, like equity and inclusion, like economic development, and like safety together. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll start with our first topic of the night, which is about managing growth and affordability. The great debate in our communities right now is about managing future development. There is a consensus that Sammamish should be affordable enough for people who work here to live here. Studies have shown that our most cost-pressured residents are school district faculty, young families, the elderly, and local service providers. But residents are also concerned about the impacts of new development on the environment, traffic, and public safety. Now, the passage of statewide bills like HB 1110 will require Sammamish to upzone extensively as part of next year's comprehensive plan update. So this is a two-part question. First, where do you see future home construction being planned in our updated comprehensive plan? And second, how do you propose creating enough affordable housing for families and local service providers while maintaining the green space and neighborhoods that existing residents already love? So to start, we will have Mr. Amato. You have two minutes when you start.
All right. Thank you. Glad to go first on a really complex question. But I think it's absolutely critical that we do create more affordable housing in Sammamish. And if elected, I do intend to follow the law that the legislature passed. Of course, one of the ways to make sure Sammamish remains affordable is to ensure that the city spends its tax revenues appropriately and doesn't end up increasing taxes more than absolutely necessary. That's number one. But to create more affordable housing, we will have to add more. We'll have to upzone certain areas. Now, the council recently went and allowed us the city to look at doubling the amount of capacity in the town center from 2,000 to 4,000. I don't support that direction. I don't think that that's a good way for Sammamish to go. There's been studies done that show evacuation in the event of a forest fire or other emergency can take a significant amount of time. I think the better way to go would be to look at areas around Sammamish that already have significant amount of impervious surfaces, like our current business centers that have acres and acres of concrete for parking lots. I think those can be turned into areas for redevelopment that can allow for commercial and affordable housing and would not have a detrimental impact on the environment due to stormwater runoff among other things. And the way to make housing more affordable is to make it economically viable for developers. So policies adopted by the council must be done in a way that allows developers to actually make money or, at the very minimum, not lose money on affordable housing. You cannot mandate that housing be cheaper without giving the people building housing a way to do that. So if the state government is not going to come in with subsidies for that, we have to have an economically viable path forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Stewart.
Great. Thank you. First, I just want to address the fact that we actually don't have an overspend in our biennium budget. We have an overly conservative budgeting process, but if anyone watched the meeting last night, we'll actually end up with this biennium in our operating budget in the black, and we'll actually be adding to our already $52 million in general fund revenue. So I just want to throw that out there. In addressing affordable housing, yes, it is absolutely critical. I believe we get affordable housing through what I call carrot sticks and partnerships. Carrots are going to be the incentives that we need as well as streamlining processes to make affordable housing more affordable. The sticks are the mandates. We can, in fact, upgrade how many affordable units we require in certain areas, particularly in the town center, and partnerships. Partnerships can only be built if Sammamish sends a clear signal to the region that we are serious about building affordable housing and not just checking boxes to say, yes, we've done the bare minimum. And we can create those coalitions that are going to be necessary. Other cities are doing it. We can do it as well. In terms of where do we put that? Yes, we need to put it in our existing centers, but we are required to build 2,100 affordable units. There is no way that we can fit 2,100 affordable units in the existing centers that we have. They are not acres and acres and acres of impervious surface that are there. We have three existing centers, and we should absolutely be upgrading those to be mixed-use and multifamily developments. How do we make sure that we protect our green spaces? Well, the very good news is that there's a serious intersection between sustainability and affordability, right? And building those multifamily mixed-use developments actually accomplishes both. In addition, we have, we're developing a robust transfer developments rights program, which can protect our existing neighborhoods and direct new growth to the centers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we have Councilmember O'Farrell.
Hi, everyone. Great question and something we were just talking the other night at city council about. Future construction is probably going to mostly happen in our town center area. It was a plan that we had written back in 2008 and had gotten started on it. It's kind of a stop-start kind of project, and I think we're finally getting to that point now where we're pressing forward with it. What we had talked about at city council the other night was a review of the town center plan that came to the land use and the housing elements of it. We are, it was, the proposition was, we were, it was proposed about 4,000 units and something like 600,000 units of commercial space, which is already in the town center plan, the 600,000 units of commercial space. The, so that would be the maximum. That's what we talked about, maximum density. And it gets very complicated, gets very convoluted very quickly because there's a lot of things that we discussed there that need further study and further explanation. And that's what we give the thumbs up to staff the other night to do is to come back to us on the 21st of November with an overview of what that study would look like. So we're only, we only give the thumbs up to a review, a potential review. We have not given the thumbs up to anything else. There is always a push and pull between our environment and construction. And as a council, we're very keen, and I am very keen and aware of our environment and environmental regulations and to preserve what makes Sammamish really unique. However, we are in the middle of a housing crisis. In the next 20 years as a state, we're going to need a million more housing units, and Sammamish is going to have to take its fair share of that. And to date, we haven't done a great job. So we really need, people need places to live. Our seniors need places to downsize. Our 20-somethings and 30-somethings need places to begin their lives after college and after they've gotten their first great job.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mrs. Bosworth.
Thank you. First of all, I'm really excited to see that the conversation around affordable housing has, is starting to include the people that we really want to see living in our community. Those are our teachers, police, fire. While working on the Planning Commission, I, like I said in my intro, I have a front row seat on trying to tackle affordable housing challenge. And by the way, I can't see Priya. Oh, but I see the clock. And what was most interesting about that plan, and we brought in these consultants to talk about how to bring in middle housing and all of these things, is the, is the solutions are not exotic. They're not new. We just need to use them. I do see town center as the place where, you know, we do, we did get this 2,100 affordable housing number from the state, and that includes different average median income ranges. And town center will likely need to be the place for the 30 to 50 and the 50 to 80. But we're going to have to come up with other places where the deeper affordable units go. And there are some options. The city owns property. The laws also allow religious institutions to take advantage and build housing if they so desire. And I agree with others that ultimately, over time, we will need to develop our existing mixed, existing centers and make them mixed-use centers. I do want to state that HB 1110 most likely will not affect most of the community as it excludes certain HOAs that are older. And so we do need to put the housing in other places. And I'm very excited about the development study that was delivered last night to city council where they did the study to see how development would affect our community, and perhaps it might even make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Gupta. Two minutes.
So I, I think it's important to start that we're mandated to take growth because of the Growth Management Act. And Sammamish is within the urban growth boundary. The logic of the urban growth boundary is we put our growth here so that we can preserve our rural spaces outside of the boundary. We can preserve our continuous green space outside and prevent urban sprawl. And we've talked, the fellow candidates have talked about dense development, the benefits of it. Dense development, unit per unit compared to single-family housing is more efficient for our schools in terms of students generated. It's more efficient in terms of traffic generated on our roads. It's more efficient in terms of stormwater. So how do we take growth responsibly? I think it is dense development compared to single-family housing. So where do we take growth? It seems to me that town center makes sense. And as other candidates have mentioned, converting our commercial centers to mixed-use developments over time. I think that makes sense. That is the efficient way to do it. As a, when I was serving on the Parks Commission, we were given mandatory DEIB training. And one of the takeaways from that was how big of a role housing and housing security plays in equity. And that was something that I hadn't realized. So if we're talking about affordability, we also need to make sure that we're doing it right. Like, we're not, we're not just putting, building the housing. We want to make sure that we're providing the services, whether that is, those are amenities, whether that's healthcare, whether that's transit. So, you know, the people that live there, they can get to the things that they need to get to, whether that's their job or, you know, the health services or whatever they need to use. Dense development, also very good for transit. And, you know, the more transit that we put in our town center, the more transit we all get to use. And very quickly, I'll also highlight the Transfer of Development Rights Program. I think that's the same kind of logic. Development goes here. It goes in our, our centers so we can preserve our green space elsewhere and enhance our contiguous tree canopy outside of the centers.
Yes. Last but not least, Mrs. Randolph.
Thank you. The proposal to increase the density of town center that was shared last Tuesday night is concerning to me. In particular, because the cost of doing another EIS study will take about a year or over a year, I think, is what Mr. Pyle had said. And we do not know the cost of that. At this point, our city is struggling with fiscal responsibility, so I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned that Vision 2050 states that housing should be located near jobs and sustainable transit options to ensure the region's jobs and housing balances maintained and equity is considered. The reason I find these, these challenges is because what we're doing is forcing people to have a particular way of life, one that the rest of the citizens of Sammamish were not, have not necessarily had. And so I want to quote from Habitat for Humanity's webpage. "As home prices for rental and ownership continue to outpace wage growth in the United States, families find themselves struggling in other major areas of their lives as basic needs are pitted against each other." I prefer to look for options that stop perpetuating the gap between the haves and the have-nots and allow people to buy into the American dream. You know, I have criticized the Habitat for Humanity houses on 2/28. However, I understand that owning property is important for many, and it is really the only way to break the cycle of poverty and dependence or to allow someone who has a well-established position to own a piece of the great community that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our next subject, which is sort of related about fiscal priorities. Sammamish has been described as a bedroom community where residents commute to other cities to work. In 2019, Sammamish only had 7,500 local jobs, while Issaquah had 30,000 and Kirkland had 50,000. This makes us incredibly reliant on property taxes to fund city services, which has angered residents over time and led to a revenue shortfall. Making Sammamish friendlier to local businesses has been mentioned by many campaigns on their platforms. And when our organizations reach out to locally-owned businesses during COVID, they were often unaware about they were often unaware about support that was offered to them by the Samamish Chamber of Commerce, or they found it too unwieldy to be helpful. So for each candidate, what creative ideas do you have to lure and support more local businesses in Samamish? And what can the city do to connect more with minority-owned businesses who haven't historically interacted with the chamber? So that will go first to Mrs. Bosworth. Two minutes when you begin.
Thank you for the question. We definitely need to diver- diversify our, our income for the city. We do rely a lot mostly on property taxes and one of the sort of frustrating things as I read documents and listen to city plans is how much we have excluded the town center from consideration. So I think first and foremost, bringing and making that part of the conversation as we move forward on all different topics is incredibly important. Creative ideas, I think that for a long time, we've asked the public what they want to see in Samamish, and we've gotten a lot of answers. And one of the things I would love to see is our town center area become a gathering place. I recall in one of the focus group feedback in one of our studies was that it said how what the young people want and what our seniors want is kind of the same thing. And when I go to city events, I see families flocking to our farmer's market, our fourth on the plateau. So I think that that's important to create a permanent place for that. You ask about my minority-owned businesses. I would love to uh, see creative uses in our town center and work with our, our partners there to, to allow for smaller spaces. Like the lovely meal that I got at the farmer's market, they would love to have a place in Samamish to sell their food. I think that we need to embrace the diversity in our community, and I would love to see potentially like um, a multicultural food court similar to Crossroads in Bellevue. And so I think we have a lot of ideas, we just need to put our town center on the main page so that we can start that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that we're joined by Councilmember Trine, so welcome. Uh, next up, we will have Mrs. Randolph. Two minutes, and the question is in the main chat.
You'd like to give me the opportunity to speak, I would do that.
Uh, we will let the order proceed first, and then you can have your opening statement briefly. Mrs. Randolph, you're muted.
Sorry, I can't see the chat.
Okay.
So, uh, oh, okay. Um, I Okay, I'm just going to take a cut at answering that question.
Two minutes.
The city council has overspent or has exceeded the revenues this year. I believe that the city council should develop a matrix approach to spending that guides the way to further investments in infrastructure, land acquisition, and spending. I think this will help them stay focused on budget challenges. I think one of the main things that we need to do is to support our small businesses. I think we can do that by streamlining the permitting process and filling up the empty business spaces available in the city. We need to keep startup fees low so that small businesses have a fighting chance to succeed. This will go a long way towards increasing the revenue of the city, because I do agree that we do need to look for additional sources of revenue. I was surprised when I talked to um, the APNA market, not to um, earlier, um, couple months ago. And they told me that they were actually trying to expand their store, that they were paying for a lease for over, um, for the last year, and were not able to get it permitted so that they could open up that business. I think that's one of the things that we can do is start working with the people that have businesses. I talked to another woman at um, coding center, and she said it took her almost a year. She said she almost ran out of money before she could get her business started up. That's concerning to me. I think we need to, again, walk the talk. If we really do care about small businesses, we need to do the things that will support them. I believe that we should also bring our entrepreneurial community together and give them a place so that they can work and synergize with others. We need a place like a WeWorks where the city can utilize existing spaces and promote entrepreneurism within our community.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have Mr. Gupta.
So, uh, I think, how do we support local businesses? How do we bring more business in? Um, so I think for the first time, Samamish is creating an economic development plan, which is going to be part of our comprehensive plan. And I think that's maybe the most important part, is creating a plan, figuring out what does our community want? The city's been doing a lot of outreach this summer, uh, doing booths at the farmer's market, saying, what are we missing? What are the amenities you would like to see in the city? So I think, how do we bring more business? We identify what the community wants so that we can, uh, we can make sure that what is brought in is going to be patronized, right? Because we, if, if the city just uh, picks amenities out of a hat or if council says, you know, these are our priorities, that may not actually reflect the, the needs of the community. So the public process is very important there. I think also, the uh, we have a great chamber. Uh, I serve on the board of a nonprofit called Samamish Friends. And we are, this year, we're sponsoring a haunted house activity. And we got in touch, the, the haunted house group got in touch with the Chamber of Commerce. And um, they actually got a lot of sponsorship money. A lot, they covered all of their costs with sponsorships uh, from businesses in and around Samamish. So I think that really speaks to uh, the business community that exists and the power and the reach of our Chamber of Commerce. So if we, if we as a city make sure that we have a good relationship with our Chamber of Commerce, we can give them the tools that they need to succeed, um, I think that really helps uh, the chamber's efforts then to spread their message, right? If, if the city can be kind of the clearinghouse, if someone comes to the city and says, hey, I have a business in Samamish, how do I get in touch? Um, or if they're at an event, the city can be proactive and go out and say, hey, look, we, we realize you have a business here. Here's a great resource in our community, uh, here's how you get in touch. I think that's, that, that can be very powerful as well.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, first, uh, I agree with uh, with Mr. Gupta. We're creating an economic development plan for the first time. Uh, we're gonna be twenty-five next year, so I think this is long overdue. The second thing is creating more commercial space. One of the biggest challenges we have is that the commercial spaces that we have today are all, almost all um, managed by one uh, commercial management company, and they have not proven to be very friendly to uh, the current residents, um, or helping out. They were not very helpful during the pandemic either. So having some competition and having some other commercial management companies is gonna be critical. The third thing, um, in, is creating a commercial center. Uh, we, we've learned in uh, this sort of um, hybrid world where a lot of stuff happens online that small businesses thrive when there's uh, mixed use. So we need to make sure that we have spaces where businesses can be successful, where they're going to have uh, traffic all day long and in the evenings. So I do think that the town center uh, will, will very much help with that. Another thing that can help is a transit plan that can really help connect our, our commercial centers and connect our residents to those centers so that people don't always have to drive. We have a lot of teens and tweens that would love nothing more than to have stuff to do in the city. People want more restaurants, people want more of those things. So I think we can create that connectivity. Um, and some of our other multimodal plans to really create that connectivity will very much help. Um, and then in terms of the chamber and how we can really help, we have a, a pretty unique chamber, they're small um, and unique, and I think that the city is now partnering with the chamber instead of fighting with the chamber, I think that's critical. And I think that we can really help as a city to create that, that welcoming uh, community to bring everyone together. We've done that in, in other endeavors, and I think we can really help to create that connectivity. The last thing I'll leave you with is, we don't have a business tax, and I think we need to continue to have no tax uh, on those businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Amato, your plans for supporting local businesses?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Um, first, I want to clarify some things from the budget. I'll read from the, the budget document. The two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four biennial budget requires the use of approximately five million from fund balance to balance operating costs. And then another portion of it says, for the forecasted period, the ending fund balance falls below the city's ten percent strategic operating reserve policy and turns negative in the year two thousand twenty-eight. This council absolutely did adopt a fiscally irresponsible budget. Nothing can change that. That's what happened when they adopted that budget. The other aspect that we're dealing with is that this council negotiated against itself when it opted to go for the twenty-one hundred growth target. The council needs to remember that they represent the residents and the people of Samamish, not King County. King County is a separately elected council that advocates for them. Samamish should have a council that advocates for Samamish. We must be good partners, but we shouldn't negotiate against ourselves. As far as small businesses are concerned. Um, one of the challenges Samamish has, has Samamish has is that we have a significant number of people who leave Samamish when they go to work. We don't have the support of an internal population for restaurants, bars, and other things to operate. I've got the endorsement of a small business owner who lives in Klahani, but opened up her restaurant in Issaquah. And when asked why, she said, because I can't operate without a lunch crowd. Samamish doesn't have a lunch crowd. So we've got a lot of challenges before us for businesses to be able to be successful in Samamish. Um, and businesses don't, minority-owned businesses or other businesses, they don't need any special treatment from the city of Samamish. But what they do need is the council and a city that cares, and it means going out and talking to them and listening and learning what they need. And then acting on it. And I don't think the city has done a good job of actually going door-to-door and talking to those businesses, and that's something that we'll do. I have ten years of experience as a small business owner. I've lived this every single day for a decade. And as a council member, I know what we can do to, uh, to, to do, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you. I'm gonna read the questions just to re-remind myself. So what creative ideas do I have to lure and support more local businesses in Samamish? Well, first, there's kind of two things that came to mind when I was thinking about this. One, I think we need a local business directory. I think we've lots of local businesses in Samamish that do not have a storefront, and they're not obvious to anyone that they are in operation. I have a friend of mine who lives up the road, who is, who runs her own beautician business, and she is absolutely fantastic, operating it out of her home, and she would really love slightly bigger space and not on her home turf. She's the most amazing beautician you've ever met, and she deserves her own space and deserves a s- um, a storefront in order to grow her business. So I'd love to see us um, supporting people like Rashma. Um, so I think a local business directory would be one way to go, and at least then our lo- our locals could look it up online and see who in Samamish are providing all the different services that they may want to avail of and keep our tax dollars or sales tax dollars, et cetera, in within our city limits. The second thing I'd like to do for small businesses is actually host a job fair. And we could do this in conjunction with our um, Chamber of Commerce. If I do it every year, we could even do a job fair slash volunteer fair where local businesses could come and say, this is who I am, this is what I do, and this is the support and the hiring needs that I have and put that out there through our community. And I think that that would really be something that we could, we could make that an annual event. Um, and the second part of your question, if I can just scroll down, excuse me, excuse me. Um, what can the city do to connect more of minority-owned businesses who haven't historically interacted with the chamber? And I'm really sorry to hear that. I'm sorry to hear that our, our local business owners have felt kind of left out. And I think part of me of this economic development plan that we're putting together for our comp plan, we have been reaching out to local Samamish businesses and finding out what is it do they need from the city, what more support do they need? And how more involved could the chamber, could we be with that? And I look forward to hearing that feedback. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And let's give Councilmember Trine uh, two and a half minutes. And sir, could you introduce yourself, explain why you're running, and then perhaps uh, some ideas about supporting local businesses in future?
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, Kent Trine, running for position four. I'm running to uh, be re-elected to finish the job that I started. When I first ran in two thousand nineteen, I ran to, knowing full well that in two thousand twenty-four, we would be updating our comprehensive plan. And so I wanted to have all the backs, I wanted all the knowledge ahead of time so that I could be well-prepared to adopt the, a new plan for the twenty-year cycle. Techn- the twenty-year plan that would be then re-updated again in ten years. Uh, with that also, I was, my plan was, at the time, was to introduce uh, regulations that would make it so that we would have a fighting chance uh, in front of the Planning Commission or the um, the Hearings Board Commission so that the city had a fighting chance when it came to uh, defending its positions on its comprehensive plan. Following that, we would have, after uh, adopting these new regulations, which will happen in two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, we would al- also need to add in design standards. And follow, following that, I, I believe that as far as the environment goes, one of the best things that the city could do is adopt the wildlife corridors. So that was in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, or two thousand twenty-four now, n- nothing's really changed. Uh, those same goals are still uh, in front of me, and those are the things that I'm uh, will work towards and will continue to strive to, to put into place uh, when elected, when re-elected. As far as the business goes, uh, first and foremost, we need to not have a b- business and operating tax. We have a lot of people in the city that have jobs or careers and businesses that operate from their home. And so with that being said, uh, you know, would be a tax that I would not, again, I'll restate, I would not support. Uh, and then following that, uh, we would need to definitely uh, support or help or encourage the current chamber to include the diversity of businesses and uh, encourage the uh, business owners that are in the city to join in on their chamber and then support them uh, moving forward.
Okay.
I think in the past, that, that's not been happening.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to our last pre-selected topic for the evening. If you're in the audience and you have a question, please send that to me via direct chat so that the candidates can see the main question in the main chat. So we'll move on to uh, the vulnerable populations topic, and we have to discuss the comments that were made at the Samamish Planning Commission during Pride Month. Uh, during a DEI training, one of the Asian commissioners said that LGBT members were promoting diseases and infestation in the minds of kids in schools. Understandably, this caused quite a bit of backlash, and the commissioner ultimately stepped down. So our question for the candidates is, do you think that situation was properly managed? And what criteria would you be using to assess individuals when they apply for a commission? And more broadly, uh, Samamish's demographics are changing very rapidly. The Asian population has grown from nineteen percent in two thousand ten to thirty-three percent this year. And there's gonna be more discussion about, you know, personal beliefs and diversity. And so as we become more diverse, how does the city maintain a balance between respecting personal beliefs while fostering inclusivity and interaction between communities? So that will first go to Mrs. Bosworth.
All right, there was a lot to that question, and I don't see it in the chat. So I'll just get started. Uh, I had the unfortunate distinction of being there that night. And I have to tell you that it was devastating. And I quickly um, tried to figure out what happened. Um, that night, many of us froze. The comments that were made were just so abhorrent. Um, I do want to say that when that meeting ended that night, I actually walked out and spoke to Commissioner Wassim. And I let him know that I did not support what he said. As far as how it was handled, I immediately sent an email that night to our planning commissioner folks saying that that was handled all wrong. The very next morning, I called the mayor and other council members and let them know what happened. And then I worked with our coordinator to make sure that the video was posted as soon as possible with a disclaimer. I did all this because it happened. I did all this because it happened and it was important for the community to hear about it quickly and efficiently. And I think there was, the city responded well. I personally showed up at the, at the city council meeting virtually because I was out of town the next Tuesday. And instead of providing excuses, I literally met them where they're at and let them know that I was disappointed as well. I think that going forward, you know, we do have a diverse community and we need to spend more time talking to our fellow candidates for commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the initial response by the planning commission was less than stellar, but at the same time, who would have thought that was coming? Just to be trust and transparency, I did not vote for the gentleman to be on the, on the planning commission. And so, you know, but it's what it was. I think the city then handled it as, as best as it could. And then my, my first response from that was to just let the mayor know that, that they were loved and that the, the city was, you know, we, we care, we care. We care about all the residents in our community, no matter what their belief is and what their race, creed, sexual orientation, any of that. So we want to be an accepted and inclusive community. And so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Gupta.
I think I didn't hear about the incident until a couple of days after it happened. And when I watched the video, I was honestly shocked at, you know, what was said on the dais by someone who was representing the city in their official position. But I think what really struck me about that incident was how the community came together after the fact. The council meeting after that incident was absolutely packed with people there expressing support and love and inclusion. And I think that, that was amazing. And I think that really speaks to the character of Samamish. How was it handled? I think that is how it was handled. Our community came together and expressed its values. What can the city do? I think, you know, whatever the position is, whatever volunteer commission it is, you can't screen for everything. But I think what you do is you make it very clear what the city stands for. We stand for diversity. We stand for inclusion. We stand for equity. Right? And if if, if something happens where a commissioner transgresses, you know, then it's very clear that this is not what our city stands for. This is, this is not Samamish's values. As we become more diverse, you know, I think it's incredible. I come from Oklahoma, Tulsa, surprisingly large Indian population there, but as you can see, anytime there is an event at the Iskon Temple on two twenty eighth, there is an enormous Indian population here. And it's not just Indians, it's an incredibly, you know, individuals from all around the world. Again, I think you're making it clear what the city stands for. Events like our Lunar New Year event, giving people a place to come and celebrate their culture and opening it up to other members of our community. I think that's powerful, and I'd like to see us continue to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Randolph, when you're ready.
I find it ironic that the gentleman who was the subject of your question was specifically recruited for the planning commission due to his diversity. Then when he did not bow to the social agenda, which went against his strongly held beliefs, he was condemned. Now, to be clear, I am not in alignment with what he said or the manner in which he said it. He should have been instructed to walk to the public comment podium to make any personal statements. However, I believe he has the right to voice his concerns. The personal attacks on him and his business were not becoming of a city who prides themselves on diversity, inclusion, and belonging. Whether we agree or disagree with the position, we must respect each other's right to speak and be heard. We must begin to find and build on common ground if we truly want to have a respectful community and value true diversity. Many people are feeling threatened these days and they're afraid to speak up and disagree with even the smallest faction of society. These attacks serve only to silence people. They do not open up a dialogue for better understanding and acceptance. I do not agree with what he said, but I do defend his right to say it. Our right to free speech is being trampled on and must stop. The tears of outrage expressed during the council meeting that followed should have been saved for those who have experienced increased crime, drug and alcohol addictions, and families dealing with the loss of a family member. We need to focus on healing our divides, not widening them. That is why I am focused on one community, many voices, to accept and understand the diverse cultures of our community.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you. So do I think the planning commission situation was handled properly? I do think it was handled properly because we have now for the first time procedures in place for such situations that when they arise. Sometimes things take a little bit of time. I think what happened after that particular incident, after that meeting, sometimes people want very swift action, and I get that and understand it. But sometimes procedure, correct procedure takes a little bit of time. And that's what was happening in, that was what was happening in the background. I supported and I voted for that particular person to be appointed to planning commission because I was excited to have a member of that community and a small business owner on planning commission. And I've come from planning commission myself, so I was excited to see what, what someone with that background and what that business, local business background would bring to the commission. And I was tremendously disappointed when it ended the way it did. So I think we have to put faith in our, our processes that we've set up at the city hall, and they were working. I believe in creating a city where all are welcome. We all may, we all may have completely different beliefs on one issue or another. And they are what they are. They are your personal beliefs. When you are in a civic forum, it is not a place for personal beliefs. And you may hold your personal belief because we do live in a democracy, but it should not be at the cost of somebody else's way of life. So we need, we are a multicultural and diverse city, and we've grown into that. And I think it is absolutely wonderful, speaking as a person from another country also, this, this city has welcomed me very well. And everyone needs to feel like they have got a place here. And I love to see that this year, for the first time, we really celebrated pride. We celebrate our multicultural city, and I'd like to see us continue in that thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amato, your thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. As far as what could have happened to make sure something like this hadn't happened was just simply Googling the commissioners or the people who applied for these commissions because the individual in question had a history of saying things that were divisive and inappropriate. As far as the issue being handled well, I, as you've heard, I've got, you know, some critiques for this council, but I think they did an outstanding job. I think it was important. I suppose she since it was said from the dais that the council came together and denounced that, that language and that viewpoint and made it clear that everyone is welcome in Samamish. So I, I don't have anything negative to say about what the council, how the council acted after the fact and that, and that and what they put in place to make sure this doesn't happen again. So just, let's see here, the rest of the question. Well, just, you know, I was really in disbelief when, when I heard it was said. I sent it to my wife. Her and I, we used to go to that restaurant frequently. It was our go-to place when we had people over. But it's not, it's just not something that we can personally support. So I, I don't know if I'm fully answering the question. It's a really difficult one for me to talk about, but there's a lot of people in Samamish who were really hurt by what that individual had to say. And I do think in this instance, the council handled, handled it very well and did what they could to try to heal a little bit of the damage that was caused by damage and hurt that was caused by, by those statements. So anyway, thank you, council, for the actions you took following, following that statement.
Thank you. Lastly, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. Do I think the situation was handled properly? Well, I think we absolutely, as a council, acted as swiftly as we could. The city got a statement out quickly. The planning commission, you know, when things are happening in the moment, I have to say I watched the video a couple of times. And the comments came kind of out of left field. So I, I think that the planning commission really didn't see it coming and didn't know what to do. We are working on getting some additional training. We have community members, the Platopians for Peace are working on getting bystander training so we can all learn how to handle situations like this better in the moment. How do we vet applicants? I've actually started talking with other elected officials around the region. This incident rocked the region, and we're working on how we can vet candidates for commissions better. So I don't have a great solution now, but I am working on that. And finally, and I think the most important part of the question, as we become more diverse, how do we balance personal beliefs with inclusion? We are a free country and everyone is absolutely allowed to believe whatever they choose to believe. My dad had a theory about the end of your nose. Your beliefs and your rights only extend to the end of your nose or until they bump into someone else's. So when you share your beliefs in a way that are hurtful and harmful to others, that is not acceptable, not appropriate. And I don't believe that any religion promotes calling other people an infestation, and that is never going to be acceptable. And that should never be acceptable. So I think where we have to come to is say, hey, you can believe whatever you like. But when you're sitting on that dais, you represent and you have to be there for the entirety of the community. You cannot be calling people names and making people feel unwanted. And I, I just want to say what I said the night the council addressed this to everyone in our community. I see you and I love you and I accept you. Because we have to be able to, to reach out and say that to people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that's it for the prepared questions. We'll now go on to audience questions. A reminder to send those to me via direct chat so that the candidates can see the questions. We were receiving many questions about the deficit and specifically with one minute, what ideas do you have to diversify our revenues beyond property tax? And what items would you be cutting from the budget? Because we've heard many candidates speaking about prioritizing budget items and you know, looking at ROI. So what are one or two budget items that you think are ripe for becoming more efficient? So first person will be Councilmember O'Farrell with one minute.
Thank you. Well, we've already made cuts to the budget. If you have tuned into our latest meeting, city manager already had asked all his departments to look at every single department, every single item in their department. And they've already shaved off two percent of the budget. So that was a great starting point. We've also increased our revenues beyond what we had anticipated for this coming biennium. We do a two-year budget, so it's for twenty three and twenty four is what we're at right now. So revenues have been increased beyond our expectation because we have been earning higher interest on some of our accounts. So it looks like we have a very, we already had a balanced budget, but our operating budget is in the black right now because we have increased revenues coming from interest that we had not anticipated. And we've made two percent cuts across the board via our city manager. So without depleting services that our residents have come to enjoy.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Randolph.
Ashwin, I cannot find the chat with a question. Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. What ideas do you have to diversify the city's revenue sources beyond property taxes? And what items from our budget do you think you'd be looking at for cuts?
Thank you. I believe that we should diversify the revenue sources is by increasing commercial space, having more businesses, and supporting those businesses to, again, to provide another source of revenue to the city. It is a more of a long-term approach. So in the meantime, I think we should, again, I've talked about putting together a spending matrix. And I don't believe that we should do anything to cut critical services. Critical services like fire and police, those are important. Those are things that people depend on. I do think that there is some spending that should be managed better in that additions of park spaces, for example. I'm not sure that the last eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars that the city spent for parkland was actually the highest use of those dollars at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Gupta, next.
So diversifying revenues beyond property tax, I think as we look to meet our mandated growth needs, focus on mixed-use development that gives us more commercial and retail space in our city while also providing day-long customers for those businesses. We heard that, you know, businesses are being opened in Iskwa rather than Samamish because there's no lunch crowd here. If people live here, they can support. Those businesses can hopefully be supported all day long and, and be made more viable. I think also the city can be more aggressive in pursuing grants. I attended the Association of Washington Cities Conference in Spokane earlier this year, and it seems like there are a lot of opportunities between the Climate Commitment Act, which is the carbon tax, and the federal infrastructure bill. So I would really support getting a grant writer either on staff or contracted for the city. For cuts, I think we only spend about two-thirds as much as the surrounding cities per capita. So I think we run pretty lean. I'm sure there are more cuts we can make, but I'd like to increase revenue.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stewart, you next.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to reiterate again, we don't have a deficit. Deficit spending isn't even legal for municipalities in the state of Washington. We did, we did have, and we are moving away from an overly conservative budgeting process where we overestimated costs severely and always severely underestimated revenues. We've been working to true that up and increase our reserve fund. So we will have increased accountability and increased governance over the budget. Economic development, keeping the taxes that our residents already spend here in our city on goods and services. To me, that's the biggest way we can tackle that. And also by creating that additional commercial space, we will increase the amount of property taxes that the commercial properties will pay and reduce the burden on our residents. And finally, I think that we, again, we do, we are, we run twenty five to forty five percent less per capita spending on government services than any of the surrounding cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amato.
Yeah, the, the deficit spending is in place because we over, we exceeded our revenues. We overspent our revenues by five million dollars. The only reason our budget balanced is because we borrowed, we took from our ending fund balance, which is our reserves account that were built up by underspending in previous years. So we took from savings to cover the overspending and operating cost. I think Councilmember O'Farrell was correct with a previous question about businesses. One of the ways to diversify revenue is by increasing business, by implementing like a bi-local program to increase sales tax revenue. As far as specific areas to cut, one thing I would stop doing is spending money on statistically valid surveys. The council's elected to do that work. Statistically valid surveys, we don't, we shouldn't govern by surveys. Another area that I would look at cutting, for example, would be, well, I'll get to it at another point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Trine.
I think Josh Amato has kind of stated it pretty clearly.
I think Josh Amato has kind of stated it pretty clearly there. Um, but I would just say that a- as far as how the budget is operated. Um, I think we should continue, uh we should continue at the current operating reserves, not raise them. And then what we need to do is we need to look for another revenue source to uh. Bring our budget into a more balanced situation where we're not dipping into our reserves to pay for our operations. It's doable. We just have to have the political will to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Mrs. Bosworth.
Thank you. Last night's meeting was very encouraging. We kind of did a checkpoint out or started a biennium checkpoint on the budget. I have to say, my mouth dropped a bit when I watched the meeting and I heard the city manager propose the fiscal sustainability work group. But they got together quickly. They did their work and they presented back to council. I don't necessarily agree with everything that they came back with, but I do appreciate that they brought the budget out from the back room. As I talked to previous council members, they said that there used to be finance, there used to be committees within council, in particular a finance committee. And I think that we just, a starting point to get our heads around this is to spend more time looking at the budget. And I know there's others on council who would like to do the same, and I would love to work on that. I, like everyone else, try to spend as much money as I can in the city. And others try as well too. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll combine a couple of audience questions. It'll be about the ensuing traffic that would come from. Our growth over the next few years along two twenty-eighth Avenue and specifically what you would do to increase pedestrian safety. And uh the traffic during the, the choke point hours. So what plans do you have to sort of mitigate that traffic in the coming years? So that'll go first to Mrs. Randolph.
Thank you for that question. Um, I do want to quickly clarify something that someone said earlier and I just to, as a point of uh clarity. We have a republic, not a democracy, and that's what makes us different. As far as the traffic on two twenty-eighth, I believe that there are programs in place that we can get for, to help our emergency vehicles so that when, when a. Uh, police vehicle comes through or a fire truck, all the lights can change. That will help ensure police services can get, can get to people when they need them. Traffic on two twenty-eight is appalling. I am concerned with another two thousand one hundred residents, even though they're limited to one car. Will create more of a challenge on two twenty-eighth, especially with the addition of a new high school. I think we need to implement and put money into the projects that will help. Two twenty-eighth with either bus lane pullouts or something to keep traffic flowing. The new um. Medium there, every time work is done on that medium, a traffic lane is shut down. That is not helpful to traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Gupta.
Uh, so I think uh again, by focusing our uh the mandate, the development we're mandated to take. By focusing that in town center and potentially putting a trans uh transit center in uh with that development. I think that helps mitigate some of the uh traffic concerns that development will bring as compared to if we do twenty-one hundred. Single-family homes, you know, I think that would have a much more outsized effect on our traffic. Uh, in addition, Light Rail will be opening in uh twenty twenty-five maybe. Um, so once that opens, hopefully that will help take some pressure off as people, as it becomes easier for people to uh take mass transit. Uh, Eastside Samamish Trail just opened, super, super exciting and incredible project finally open. Getting people safe ways to get there so that they can connect transit to uh Light Rail, I think will be very impactful. Also, the city is putting together a transit plan. I'm on the Community Action Committee for that. Uh, we're looking to get safe crossings, safe bus uh, bus stops, uh bus pullouts, uh bus queue jumps. Uh, the city is working on it and I'd also like to expand the Metro Flex program. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you. Um, I think when it comes to traffic, even if we didn't. Build one more housing unit in Samamish, we can't build our way out of traffic. We can't put a five-lane highway down Samamish. In order to allow every single car free movement around the city. So it involves thinking about how up, how else we can get around our city, how else can we get on and off our plateau? So that involves public transportation. We have never had a transportation master plan in the city. We did start out with one back in twenty-seventeen. And then it was shelved. It remains as a draft. You can go online and you can actually pull it up and take a look at it. It's very interesting. Um, so I'm glad to hear and it's great to hear that Sid is working on that transit plan, and I think that is something we really need. We need to expand our Metro Flex system, which we just, they just expanded it in further into Issaquon and these. It can needs to be expanded further into Samamish. We need safer routes to school so our kids can start walking and biking to school. And encourage them to take the school bus more often. Not every single child has to be delivered straight to the front door by mom or dad. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mister Amato.
Yeah, so uh as Councilmember O'Farrell mentioned, the transportation master plan has a list of half a billion uh in projects that. Probably more than that now, but one thing I would do is I would look at that and prioritize those based on. Increased throughput for our roadways and increased pedestrian safeties, particularly uh increased pedestrian safety, particularly around elementary schools. I've talked to, I don't know, probably a few dozen parents um around elementary schools that are concerned about speeding and just general safety. And if those parents don't feel like it's safe for those kids to walk to school, then they're going to get in the car and make traffic even worse around uh peak times. Um, so that's, those are the things I would prioritize, but we can't actually do that work unless we have a funding plan in place. And the only way this council's been doing road projects in the past is by taking from. Ending fund balance. I think we need to start bonding out these projects. Every day that we wait, they're getting more expensive because of interest rates and cost of labor. We need to act now by bonding.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. We definitely need our transportation master plan. Uh, twice the council in recent years have voted not to do the transportation master plan. Systems don't work unless you plan for them. Um, transit will be a big part of that. We cannot build roads out, out of it. Every study has shown that as you build more lane miles, they fill back up. So there really has to be a master mobility plan. Um, I've already been advocating for, and the council is working on sidewalk gap projects and safe routes to school. The sooner we can get those plans done, we can get um uh funding from grants to get those done, but we have for too long stalled and not done those plans. The other thing for people to keep in mind is that uh AAA just put out, it costs nine thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars a year to own and operate a car. So. Requiring people to own two, three, four cars is not the answer. We have to have other alternatives. The Light Rail actually opens in March of twenty twenty-four, so having transit options to get people from the plateau to the Light Rail. Is how we're going to help solve it. We only need to get about ten percent of the traffic off the road and then we don't have a traffic problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bosworth, your thoughts?
Yeah. Think traffic here is just a matter of perspective. For many of us who've come from other places, we don't see a gigantic traffic problem. However, it does get a little congested during commuting times and school times. I do my part. I've been a bus rider for over ten years. It's one of the reasons I moved to Washington. A lot of people complain about our service, but it is to me uh worth the hassle. I think with climate change, it serves as an interest, uh a very urgent inspiration for us all to look within ourselves and to. Councilmember Stewart's point, figure out how not to own so many cars. I talk to people all the time and I'm so inspired by how far they are willing to walk in the city. And so I would focus on safety and walkability and bikeability in the city to really kickstart that movement. And get folks out of their cars and hopefully towards the center of our city to enjoy our town center. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, Councilmember Trinh.
So let's just be clear about a couple of things because I sit on the East Side Transportation Partnership Committee and transit's not coming. Up to Samamish until way after twenty fifty. So what we're going to see and what we see now is that. More than ninety-seven percent of the commuters are in their cars. At, at its best, transit will provide three percent. So as you grow, so will the traffic. So what is the solution? Number one, manage the growth. Number two. Provide an alternate means of transportation that would be a simple loop. Around the north end that would allow trap uh commuters to get down to Light Rail. That plan has been presented to the city staff since twenty twenty. So we need to move forward on that. The second would be to. Get smart technology on our light system so that there's efficiency at the intersection. Okay, the last would be to actually have a plan in place that actually meets the needs of the city. That's the transportation master plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think we are almost out of time, so it is time for our one-minute closing statements. So. We'll just get a brief statement from each of you on why Samamish voters should choose you. So first, we have Councilmember Stewart, when you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, I've knocked on thousands of doors this summer and fall and thousands more. The first time I ran, it's absolutely the best way. To get out and learn what's going on on the ground and to hear from people who might not otherwise have a chance to be heard. I've learned so much in the last six years about our diverse communities' needs. And I'm very excited to apply those learnings as we go forward. If you put your faith in me again, I'm committed to staying deeply involved in the community and committed to listening and finding effective and sustainable solutions. To meet the current needs and the needs of generations to come. And to make sure that this is a safe and welcoming community for all. Um, I uh want to make sure that we use the latest technology and science to guide us in most cost-effective solutions. And I will do everything in my power to make it a safe and welcoming community so that everyone can be their best selves. I'm Pam Stewart and tonight I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Amato, one minute.
Yeah, thank you very much for hosting this tonight and giving us the opportunity to connect with people. Um, as I've knocked on doors, I've heard from uh people across Samamish who want to see uh more parks, safer routes, routes to schools, less congestion and more dining options. I've also heard from people, too many people, who won't be able to afford to live here if costs keep rising, including the cost of taxes. Uh, people in retirement shouldn't have to turn to second jobs or renting out their home in order to keep the, keep the home they've cherished and lived in for decades. Um, there's been a lot of talk about building affordable housing here in Samamish while ignoring the very people we're putting out if the council continues down this path of uh. The path they started of increasing taxes, including a six percent utility tax increase. Nearly five million dollars are talking about in additional property taxes, a twenty-dollar car tab fee, among others. Uh, Samamish is a young city and I believe with the right leadership, our best days are ahead of us. I'll make the. That was a quick minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trinh.
Yeah, I think it's pretty simple. We want a safe environment or, or safe community. We, we have that. Let's continue to do that. We, we have a high standard of education. So if we manage growth, we can continue to have a high level of education for our. Students and actually for the residents in Samamish. The, the last would be that we need to do what is necessary to protect the environment. I believe I'm the only council member here that, or candidate here that is talking about, hey, we need to provide wildlife corridors. Along, if, if nothing else, just along our streams so that they're connecting lake to lake. So that we can enjoy the wildlife, the trees and all the benefits that come from being in nature. And finally, that same plan will actually combat climate change in the future. Thank you, and I ask that you vote for me, Kent Trinh, for position four.
Thank you. Mrs. Bosworth.
Thank you for hosting us tonight and everyone here as well. I want to say that I stepped up to serve my community, specifically my neighborhood, two years ago. Homeowners associations struggle all the time due to lack of interest or they downplay the truth. It's hard. This experience has been the hardest, one of the toughest things I've ever had to do in my life. It's great working on a team, but we have to make tough decisions. Decision is that you try to make as transparently as possible, yet still receive much critique. There've been great moments working on our trails and improvements in other areas in the neighborhood, but there've been some tough moments when dealing with neighbors and their homes. Therefore, I go into seeking city council with my eyes wide open. We are here to serve through the good and the bad. Do our work transparently. And lead with dignity and grace. Already, I feel of service. While putting up signs, I helped a lost boy find his way home and return valuables I found by the road. Thank you for your time and for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Gupta, when you're ready.
I'm a community volunteer looking to help out in a way that is hopefully beneficial to the future of our city. If there's one thing I can leave you with today, is that I think Samamish's greatest strength is our community. Let's remember the challenges we face are not ours alone. There are opportunities to partner with our neighboring cities, our county and our state. If Samamish is strong, then we are stronger as the east side and even stronger as King County in the state of Washington. We can and should be proactive in working with our elected officials at every level to advocate for ourselves and for our neighbors. Policy isn't served best in two-minute chunks. I've knocked on over a thousand doors so far, had some great conversations. So following tonight, please get in touch. I'd love to meet with and learn from all of you on these topics, on any challenges and opportunities you see ahead of us. Thank you for your time and attention. Again, I'm Sid Gupta, running for position number three. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Randolph.
I have a proven track record of supporting diversity in many forms, from cultural, alternative lifestyle, ethnicity, age and gender. As well as mentoring individuals to help ensure their future success. I have tangible skills and experience that will help the city council with the challenges before us. I am concerned about growth and affordability and being fiscally responsible. It is a lot to juggle. We all are struggling because of the economy and high prices. We can't thrive if we're taxed to the max or we can't find a good paying job close to home. We must have a city council that supports small businesses in our community so businesses can thrive and continue to provide services and jobs for us. Our community strategy needs careful planning and development that does not negatively affect the environment and supports Vision twenty fifty. Input from our community is essential. I believe this concept is fundamental to our success. Hence my campaign slogan, one community, many voices. I am Pamela Randolph and I'm a candidate for Samamish City Council, position three. My website is electpamelaandoff.com and I invite you, take a look. Thank you. And thank you for hosting the forum.
The grand finale, Councilmember O'Farrell.
Wow, what an honor. Um, community engagement is how I come to be in front of you tonight. I've served on Planning Commission. The Samamish YMCA Board, the Samamish Food Project Two, Cantham Two HOA Boards, and I'm also a special needs advocate. I believe community engagement is the cornerstone of a vibrant and a successful community. As a result. We need to make sure that all our generations have a place here in Samamish in order to continue to. In, in order to continue to grow our community. Our teens and our seniors, for example, need each other. I think the hallmarks of a well-lived life is to be of service. To be of service to your families, to the people you love, your neighbors and to your community. Sometimes being of service is the cure for what ails you, as my father would say. So I encourage everyone to get out and volunteer and be of service in your community. My name is Roisin O'Farrell. I'm running for position two and I ask for your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all the time that we have tonight. Our deepest thanks to the candidates for making the time to come and speak with us tonight. And a big thank you to Priya and Nanda for timekeeping and managing the room. Uh, audience members, thank you for your questions and your participation. If you have follow-up questions that you would like to ask the candidates, please check their websites to see their upcoming events. I'm sure they'd be very happy to meet with you and answer any questions you have. A reminder to everyone that ballots will be mailed out next week, October eighteenth, so make sure you're registered to vote by then. It's very easy to do online. You can register until the end of the month online. So thank you very much for coming and have a good night.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you.